So first thing on the agenda is an executive session. I'll move that we go into executive session to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel under Master of the Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2.
Second.
And Mr. Nazaroff is not here today. Mr. Seeley?
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno? I vote yes. So we'll come back into open session, hopefully at 6 o'clock. So we're back into a public session. I guess I have to make an announcement that this is all being taped by Area 58. If you join me and sing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a 6 o'clock appointment.
So she may, she's not here, Jess. She may swing in a little bit later on. We just put her on at 6:00. That way, yeah, when she comes in, she can.
Okay, so wait until she shows up?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have a 6:15 with Lana Eldridge.
Lana.
Lana, hi Lana. And you are looking for a live entertainment permit for June 15th, rain day to June 16th. You gave up on the, on the, try to do everything in the rain?
Yeah, it was a tough sell, us. Yeah, it was a little challenging last year. We still had a good turnout, but.
I never saw so much rain in my life.
It rained every weekend here, every Saturday for the farmers market.
Gotcha. All right, so we have, the Board of Health has signed off, the Fire Chief has signed off, and there's one comment from the police chief.
He just, he had mentioned that you guys spoke, and so two, two four-hour detail officers that overlap. I think one will start at 11:00, one will start at 12:00. So for the majority of the event, you'll have two officers there. And now that they're not doing that eight and a four.
Yeah.
So that, so yeah, Chief jobs is fine, but they've worked out an agreement. It'll be two four-hour detail officers.
Excellent.
Can I actually ask a question before we go?
Sure. Go for it.
So it's actually something I've been meaning to ask for a while, and I'll ask the question. So in the past, we had asked about having a bounce house. And originally, when we asked this, when we were first looking to do this event, we were told that in order to do that, we would have to seek our own private insurance that would cover any liability for the town. So, you know, we've pursued that. We haven't found an insurance company that would do that for us. But I wanted to ask some questions around other events that have taken place on Town Hall bringing. I know it's sponsored by the town, you know, like the fireworks committee, like that's under the town's umbrella, insurance of liability. That makes sense. But, you know, the farmer's market that took place throughout the summer, I pretty consistently noticed that there was a bounce house most weekends. And I wondered what insurance that was covered under, if that was a town-sponsored event, if that's a private event, if there's private insurance that covered that, if it was a fly under the radar kind of thing. You know, it's just, again, it's a question I've been meaning to ask for months, and just in the hecticness of planning our event, I haven't been able to.
I don't know. That's a good question. Maybe.
So they were required to submit insurance documentation. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know if that was explicitly, you know, determined in the policy if there would be a bounce house. I wasn't aware that there was a bounce house. So now that we know, we will be sure that this year, if they're going to do that, that they provide a policy for that.
Yeah, I'm not looking to be the Grinch. I'm just trying to grow. I do feel bad, like, I don't want to be Killjoy. But, you know, it is something that we wanted to do, and if there's a way that we could do it, we would like to take advantage of that, so.
Okay, well, honestly, it's not, not that I was thinking about, and I'm sure you weren't either. So Cody will take a look and see what the situation is on that.
If they did, I will send you the insurance company. I thought you'd ask.
Park it. Oh, we have to park it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
No, like I say every year, I hope you have some good weather.
Yeah, I think us too.
All right, so you have a motion?
Absolutely. I will make a motion to accept the live entertainment permit application for the Halifax Pride Event for June 15th, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Thank you, guys.
All we can do is hope for the, hope for it doesn't rain as hard.
Yeah. All right. Take care.
Thank you.
I'm all over this. I'm going to get out. Fire, please, the water. Sure. Thank you. All right. No, no problem.
Okay, so we can go, are you guys here for anything in particular, or just for entertainment purposes?
Wait till you get to it.
All right, oh, all right, all right. I don't want to keep you hanging around, I'm going to have to, but you're welcome to stay.
Well, wish you good.
All right, so, let's see. The warrants?
Sure. All right, I move to affirm approval of the following commitment and warrant. Vendor warrant number 98 for $164,822.72, and ambulance commitments from 4/15/24 to 4/21/24 for $51,964.88.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the following commitment and warrants. Peril warrant number 99 for $442,172.3, vendor warrant number 100 for $213,375.4, school warrant number 101 for $662,392.70, withholding warrant number 102 for $151,459, and mobile home part fee number 5 for $5,160.
Okay, I second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes from regular session and executive session?
Sure. Where am I listed? Right here. I will move to approve the following minutes. Regular session, April 4th, 2024, and executive session, April 23rd, 2024.
I'll second.
April 4th or April 9th?
Did I say April 9th?
Did I say 4th?
Yeah.
My bad, sorry, guys. Strike that from the record, please. I move to approve the following selected meeting minutes. Regular session, April 9th, 2024, and executive session, April 23rd, 2024.
Excellent. I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Unanimous. Road opening.
So we have a road opening for a 4x6 cut for gas service at 179 Oak Street. It has been signed off by all applicable departments.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the road opening.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
The anticipated note of $1.6 million for water department.
Yes, so as you may recall, Town Meeting approved authorization to borrow up to $3 million and last spring. Good news is we have been able to use retained earnings and ARPA funding, so we are not going to have to borrow anywhere close to that $3 million. We're looking at $1.6 million. So our financial team, primarily through Sandy, Noel, our time accountant, and Linda McCarthy, our treasurer collector, have worked diligently with our financial advisors to go through the borrowing process. It's lengthy, as you can imagine, there's a lot of work involved, but it has been culminated. We, we found a buyer. The rate's actually pretty good, 4.5% is, you know, pretty good considering the market right now. And the board just needs to authorize it, and we will actually receive our money on the ninth to move forward with the water project. This is for a ban, so it's a short-term ban, so it would just be for a year, and then as we get closer to that deadline, we will reevaluate the situation on whether we want to go to a long-term borrowing, or we want to stick with another year of the ban, or we maybe look to pay off, pay it off, or pay off some of it with retained earnings, depending on how the water department's doing. But considering we are, we're requesting another $500,000 from Town Meeting out of retained earnings, that would ultimately pay this down to $1.1 million. So as retained earnings look healthier, we may utilize more of it, and if we get under a million, we won't want to go to a long-term borrowing anyways, because you have to do at least 10 years for a long-term borrowing.
Which project is this exactly?
This is for Richmond Park and the YMCA well.
Both wells?
Yeah, both well upgrades. This is, so we are in compliance with the EPA administrative order. The water discharge is, has not been up to standards, so we were required by the EPA to do this project. We've, you know, we're well underway, it's about a $3 million project, so now we just need the money to finish it off.
Okay, and any comments for the Water Commissioner? They're satisfied with?
Yeah, Bill Lindsay's been asking, you know, what's involved in the process early on, and this was the best rate.
Okay. All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the bond.
There was a question, John.
Is this for YMCA Wells 3 and 4?
Yeah, and the Richmond Park Wells, correct.
It's two out of three, so can you break down what 3 and 4 cost?
I don't have that in front of me, no. I just have the full contract, it was about $3 million.
Is it typically equal? Is it divided by 3? Is that fair to say, or is it 3, 4 commissioning more expensive than?
I can't say. That would definitely be a good question for the Water Commissioners and our Water Superintendent, though. They're overseeing the project, but the selectmen just have to approve the borrowing of the project.
Total borrowing is $1.6 at this point, with $500,000 be allocated possibly on Monday.
Correct.
Yeah, I would say you're asking those technical questions, and the Water Commission is where you will give the best answers for that, because they're, they're going to run the project.
Sure.
But we're just, we're just signing off on the bond.
Good.
Okay, so any other questions? No. So I would move to approve the bond for $1.6 million as described by Town Administrator.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Unanimous.
And then I just have a whole slew of documents that you guys have to sign, so you can do it after the meeting.
Okay. Um, consideration of projects for the American Rescue Plan Act.
So I think that's why we have some Finance Committee members here tonight. So we have about $160,000 remaining in ARPA funding. Majority of that lies within the county, so we have to apply to the county for it. We can use it for revenue loss, or, so basically any municipal purpose, but we do have to go through the process. The board does have to approve these projects. That's the only approval authority for the ARPA funding. You've approved several projects in the past. I have a sheet here that breaks down all of these ARPA. So with that, approximately $160,000 remaining, wanted to bring it forward for consideration of different projects. So as part of the capital request, there were a few items that were not able to be funded with free cash this year that are definitely necessary for the town. The financial management upgrade and the amount of $70,000 is a must. We are in the process of upgrading our financial management system. Our existing financial management system is not, they're not updating it anymore. We can receive support, but the functionality is very limited, and we need to, we have to update it. So with that, it's implementation costs from the consultant to get everyone trained, migrate all of our data over, and that's in the amount of $70,000, so my recommendation would be the board utilize ARPA funding for that. So with that, we'd leave, you know, approximately $90,000 left. There were two other requests from the other town departments to capital. One of them was for the wood chipper for the highway department. That was a request at last year's Town Meeting that Steve withdrew, and then he did submit it again this year in the amount of $84,000. It was not funded through capital. And then the other item was turnout gear for the fire department, so the Fire Chief requested 28 sets of new gear, or, I'm sorry, structural gear for the fire department. He requested 28 sets. Many of his, of the sets of gear are out of compliance, are going to be out of compliance for the next year or so. So the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee approved 12 sets of gear for funding out of the Town Meeting this year, and then another two sets to be funded out of Public Safety earmark that we received from the state. So effectively, half the, half of his request was approved pending Town Meeting approval this year, and, but there is still a need for, you know, approximately 14 more sets. So, but we weren't able to fund it with free cash. So Capital Planning Committee recommended their items. Finance Committee, and I'm sure, you know, Jim and Frank are here, they can certainly comment on it. The Finance Committee felt that it would be better spent with the fire department gear rather than the wood chipper, so that, you know, they wanted to make that known to the selectmen, that they felt, you know, this should go to the fire department rather than the wood chipper this year. Also in your packet was a memo from our mechanic regarding the wood chipper and the need for some, some work to the wood chipper, $13,000 or $14,000 of work that's needed. So again, you know, only limited funding here remaining, but, you know, we want to get going on this, we want to get the funding allocated so we can apply it to the county, get those funds, and then allow the projects to move forward.
Let me ask you on the fire department. So I know in our, in the warrant, there is, is fire equipment coming up for Town Meeting. What is, what's the difference with this?
This is just additional equipment, so gear. So the chief requested 28 sets initially. Through the Town Meeting this year, that would fund 12 sets.
Okay.
So the, if you were to approve additional funding for that with ARPA, that would fund additional gear towards his goal of 28 sets.
Would we get to 28, or not quite?
You could, you could get pretty close to the 28 with, if you were to allocate the remaining, you know, $90,000 to.
So part of this is already figured into our capital plan, and part of it is, we're looking at doing, you know, this extra funding.
So ultimately, you have three projects before you. The financial management system upgrades, which is $70,000. I would strongly recommend that because we, we need that, that needs to be done. And then the other one is you have about $90,000 remaining, and two of the larger projects or items that have come forward are the wood chipper or, and/or fire department gear. And so the Finance Committee recommended to fund the fire department gear, and so that's, it's up for consideration.
So that, I guess that may be a question for you guys, like, are, it sounds to me like, is there, is your recommendation to fund the entire fire department thing out of ARPA?
No, not the entire, the balance. The balance of this year, because next year, he's still got to turn out more gear next year as well.
Okay.
Because he's coming up on the 10-year usage of the gear.
Yeah.
And he's got a lot of expired gear that's non-compliant, that they've been having to use. And the other thing is, the firefighters only have one set of gear, or they need two sets of gear.
Okay, so, but isn't that what we're proposing here?
Yeah, about only 12. So if Town Meeting approves the request, that would give him 12 sets through there, and then we have a Public Safety earmark through the state that would give him another two.
Okay.
And so that leaves, in his request, 14 remaining sets that he's requesting this year.
Okay.
So the thought would be, you could, we could either push that off, right, to next year through capital, or the board could utilize ARPA funding to fund the remaining at the cost of the highway chipper, because we only have $90,000 remaining with ARPA.
Oh, 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 I misunderstood that. I didn't realize that. Okay, so if, if we, we can't do all three of these projects on ARPA?
Correct. We have about $160,000 remaining.
Okay, I misunderstood. All right, so let me just read a letter we got from the highway, Town Mechanic. It says that April 4th, 2024, "Research repairs required for our chipper for several years now. I've welded cracks in the chute, so the structural integrity has become poor. The main drum has stress cracks in the pockets where blades go. This is a precise part that cannot be doctored. As such, this part needs to be replaced. The safety latch system also requires replacement, has been repaired many times in the past three years. As a reminder, this unit, as a reminder, this unit is 16 years old, has 3,600 hours on it. These working hours are equivalent to 126,000 miles if it were a driven vehicle. And he attached a invoice for parts only, which totals out to $13,359.69." So that's, that's what they talk about. Okay, so we can do financial management and the fire department?
Yeah, so effectively, you can do two projects. The financial management, like I said, the financial management system is really a must. So if you do approve the financial management system integration, that'll leave you with ultimately one of the two. Fire department gear, the remaining fire department gear, or the wood chipper. And then I would think, you know, again, we don't know what's going to happen next year, but I would think whatever project does not, you know, get funded with that, would go on the capital plan, or certainly would be requested next year by capital.
We had questions?
Just a couple of quick clarification points. So are we talking, are we still in compliance if we get 12 plus the two Town Meeting on Monday, with 14 to be coming next year? Are we still in compliance with the upgrades that are needed and required by the state? And number two, are we asking about the repair of the chipper or the purchase of a new one?
Purchase of a new one.
There was two for one there.
Purchase of a new one.
14 repair.
It's a purchase of a new one.
84 new, 14 repair, correct. So we're not, we're not talking about the repair?
No.
We're disregarding that.
We could repair it, I mean, it's, that'd come out of operating budget, it's not 31.
But we're not, that's not a consideration.
No, it's $85,000 to Brian and Brad. As far as the fire department gear, because I was on that Capital Planning Committee, and the chief's presentation was that almost all of the stuff is, is either outdated or gonna be. And also, he talked about upgrading, not necessarily upgrading, but actually meeting standards, the code standards for fire equipment, that what Frank talked about, that there were, they should have two sets of these things, and they don't. Right now, they have one, and some of those are mismatched equipment.
Well, we were still, the town was still being compliant with the recommended upgrades if we separate this into this year and next year?
They would all have one set.
They would have one set.
Yeah, they would. They wouldn't have two.
So would the plan be to push that down the line?
Correct.
Well, if we did the wood chipper, I believe we have to.
Right, yeah, then we would have to.
We could do the fire, couldn't care. Any thoughts?
No, I just, I mean, we obviously want firefighters to be safe, and I guess it boils down to what do we want to, I don't want to say kick down the road, but what do we want to tackle this year and push off to hopefully next year? If they all have one good set of gear, Cody, if you could kind of educate me on how this goes, they would only have to use their second gear if their first gear is dirty, like they're having multiple calls, or?
So no, the chief, the chief and I have had extensive discussions on this. Basically, any call they go on, they have to come back and change that gear. And even if it's not a fire per se, they have to come back, change the gear, because there's just different chemicals and things they're exposed to. If it's raining and they go to a car accident, for instance, they have to change that gear afterwards, because if they do get a call for a fire, for instance, then you could have steam burns ultimately is what ends up happening. So it's, they're supposed to really regularly, almost regularly change the gear back and forth. We, we did kind of just, or, you know, on our side, we did just find out about the status of all of the gear. We weren't aware that it was to this level, you know, so the planning hasn't been great, that's why we implemented the five-year plan, so we know about these things more in advance. Because it is, it's a, it's a big expense on a normal year, never mind a year, right, free cash was a little bit lighter this year than anticipated. So it was a big unexpected expense, and, you know, my recommendation in capital was to at least get the half, and that's, that's why it kind of went that way, was because capital would fund 12, two through the earmark, that at least gets 14 of the 28, and then, you know, try to buy more next year if, if ARPA didn't go through.
Well, is it, the 12 outfits are $85,000 or something?
Yeah, they're about 60, 6,600s, is that?
Yeah, 6,600 a set.
6,600 a set. Yep, that's full sets.
I mean, the way the chief explained it when, one of the meetings I was at, that when they come, every time they come back, they're supposed to put them in the washing machine, and, and whatever that does to, to take off chemicals and that kind of thing. He was also referencing the, the fire standards that would require that two, you know, alternate outfit thing. It's been, I mean, we've always had an issue with this, mostly because we do have a substantial call fire department, and people come and go. And so when, when, you know, when a skinny guy comes in and a fat guy goes out, the skinny guy has pants that are too big, and so that's a problem. Same with tall and short, and with some, a lot of women now, for some women that are like completely different size than everything else, so it is, it is an issue. But his plan that he's expressed a couple of times in the capital planning, and also at the recent meeting, I forget which one that was, but that, you know, he would, would like to try to get everything on a regularly replaced basis, and this would start that.
So essentially, if we did this, we would be good for 10 years with our gear, with three new sets.
Effective next year, he's going to request five sets every year.
Because that's the rotation schedule.
So the, the long-term goal after five years?
Yeah.
You would, everyone, so you're going to start off with, ultimately, people are going to have, some people might have two brand-new sets, but as you start to work through the cycle, the idea is you have a primary set that's at most five years old, and then at year five, that transitions to your secondary set, and you get a brand-new set. So you're two, you'll always have two sets. One of them is your primary, that's no more than five years old, and your secondary is no more than 10 years old, because code says it can't be one than 10 years old. So it's the, it's the cost upfront to get us onto that schedule, so we're not doing this, you know, massive cost every five years.
Sure.
So it's a, it's a cycle.
It's essentially, it's not the exact same, but similar to what we do with the police cruisers, where we have to.
Yeah, similarly, it's a cycle, yeah.
Or the police vests.
Yeah.
Well, that's the same thing, after so many years, they're, they probably, they probably still work.
Yeah, sure.
You have a life-threatening gene.
But why, right, you're dealing with life-threatening issues.
Not somebody that waters, but for those who aren't informed, the financial management implementation system, what is the total cost of that, and is there any options to scale that back, or is that an all or nothing thing? What does that encompass? Quick 30 seconds.
Sure. So we're estimating $70,000. That's basically the professional services of the new company coming in, migrating all of our data from the old system to the new system, training all of our staff, and then support at first as we're onboarding the new system and the implementation.
The old system being phased out, not available, expired?
The old system is not offered any upgrades or support, so.
So we're just, what we operate now is just, is just being.
Yeah, and just very limited functionality. So one of the things, you know, the board identified goals of just creating efficiencies, financial systems and operations, and one of the first things we identified was our financial system doesn't allow for efficiency, really. Everything, most, most things have to be paper, it's not very user-friendly, so by integrating to this new system, the annual cost isn't much larger, it's about $10,000 more a year, but there's just the one-time implementation cost.
Probably 70, and there's no middle ground there. I'm just trying to think of ways to do both the chipper and the fire department thing, and do something in the middle with the financial implementation system, but I don't sound like that's available.
This was a, a reduced rate that we got. The initial cost was probably around 100, and then we were able to work with them on a reduced rate.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I'll take the lead on the discussion here. I think, I was on the capital planning when we talked about all these things over the winter, and they're all valid, they're all good. I think the chipper is, is an excellent idea, but, I mean, in my view, I think it's better, I think I agree with the Finance Committee, that it's better to put, put the fire department up to standards as opposed to buying a new wood chipper. I mean, I mean, maybe they could get by with what they have. If not, I mean, there'll be a cost, but there's, could be rentals and stuff like that, we can still go ahead and do it. And I think the Fire Chief is being thoughtful about his, you know, his future plans for, for this part, I think, and, you know, it's expensive to run a fire department, it just is. it just is. It's expensive to run everything, but the fire department just is. So I think, if I had to choose between the two, I think that's how I would go it.
Yeah, I think they're both good service to the town, but I think the deal breaker for me, and the one that pushes me over, is the public safety element of it. You know, we wanna make sure that our people that are putting themselves in harm's way are in the most up-to-date and certified stuff. That said, the town has to be okay, you know, our highway department has let us know that this chipper is on its last legs, so there's a chance that this thing.
This is the second year it's come up.
Exactly. So I don't wanna downplay their request, that they're, you know, they're kinda giving us the heads up, like, guys, this is, this is on its way out. So that said, I would go with the gear, but really look to address the chipper next year.
Okay, so would you need a motion?
So I would need you to vote to approve ARPA funding in the amount of seventy thousand dollars for the financial management system upgrades, and in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the fire department structural gear.
All right. And suppose they don't spend all ninety?
So what's, yeah, one of the things that we're doing now, as we get closer to that deadline of needing to submit everything, is, you know, the board, through, you know, multiple years, has approved, you know, various projects at different amounts, and some of those haven't come in at that amount. So what Sandy and I are working to do is figure out what has come in under budget, and there may be a remaining value. And hopefully, at the start of the fiscal year, I can come back to you and say, this is the amount we have remaining, how do we wanna allocate this?
Okay. And there's no time, is there a time crunch, like a window as to?
September thirtieth, we have to have it through the county allocated. We, for our ARPA funding, which we've used pretty much all of, it's the end of the calendar year, we have to have it allocated. But the county is September thirtieth.
Gotcha.
And we will, I'll get these applications in, you know, probably later this week, early next week. And then, like I said, once we get through town meeting, we'll start going through and pinpointing actual costs and identifying, you know, how much we have.
Leftovers.
There's leftovers.
All right, so you want one motion or two?
I want a motion, fine.
All right, so I will make the motion to approve seventy thousand dollars for ARPA funding for the financial management system implementation, and ninety thousand for the fire department gear.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I understand that the chipper is old and everything and needs some, needs a little TLC, and like you said, Jonathan, that maybe next year we've gotta kinda find a way to maybe help them out. And it may not be as big a machine as they're requesting, because it's a pretty good-sized machine that they've got up for request. We look at that and say, do we really need it that big, based on some of the equipment we bought the last couple of years, since helping with the clearing of the vegetation and stuff around town. Maybe we can get the price down on a machine somewhere and be able to fund that up. Maybe, I don't know, our free cash looks like next year, you know, I'll put it into the capital, you know, but.
Well, it's in the capital plan. Just this year, we deferred it, so.
Yeah.
So it'll come up next year again.
I just remember that chipper in a couple storms we had was the MVP of the town, you know, it really was.
Yeah, we haven't had that storm in a while.
Those storms, it felt like every other tree was down.
Correct, you're right.
They really put a lot of miles on it. So I know what you're saying, Frank, you don't wanna go for the Cadillac, but you wanna make sure you can handle a town's worth of, worth of chipping and something like that happens.
And my thoughts were, you know, once I saw the total numbers for all of the turnout gear that the fire department was gonna need over the next four to five years, those numbers are huge. And I don't know how we were gonna even fund any of that, you know. Then I saw that we had some ARPA money left, and we started talking about it, and thought maybe it might be a better fit. That's where I came.
I appreciate the finance committee's input, frankly, because I think this, by the way, I think this finance committee is excellent. I'm very impressed with the way you guys have been operating, and the people on there just seem to be perfect. So really take your opinions to heart, because I think they're, they're very well thought out, and very, very, very good. So just excellent job.
We appreciate that, and I feel that we've got a, you know, I've only been on it two years now, and I feel it's, put it down in fifteen, we got you, you know.
Excellent. And you got, you two are all right, too.
Yeah, a couple, but we've done a little bit. Yeah, voice your opinion, maybe sometimes a little too much.
I just wanted John so we could get you away from Frank Johnston, town meeting. We turned our town meetings by twenty minutes.
Yeah, no, it's been a long, it's great, though. But our committee meetings have gone longer.
That's true.
That is true.
All right, next thing up is vacation carryover requests. So the highway cemetery department has, one, two, three, four, five requests to carry over a week's vacation time. We were trying to cut back on this.
This is standard. They're not asking for anything above what's allowed in their contract. Just for some reason, in their contract, it requires for them even to carry over the minimum, they have to have approval from the selectmen and the highway surveyor. So this isn't anything above and beyond, like we had discussed, we wanna limit the above and beyond, but this is the, this is the minimum for them.
All right. Okay, any discussion?
No.
So I guess I'll move to approve the requested carryover from the highway department.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have a fuel supply contract?
Yes, so we went out to bid in 2022 for a fuel supply contract. We awarded it to Dennis K. Burke. There is three option years on the contract. We are looking to pick up the third option year. This will be the last year of the contract, it'll go up to bid again sometime in fiscal '25. The prices, in conferring with Steve Hayward, the prices are still competitive and a very reliable service. So just looking for the board to approve the continuation of the contract.
Okay, and the highway surveyors in favor of this, right?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the third option of the fuel supply contract.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Creation of a senior center building committee.
This is exciting.
So Mr. Bruno and I have discussed this previously, but as you know, we are working towards building a Newcastle on aging. The first step in that process is you need an owner's project manager. Mass General Law requires any public works project over 1.5 million, any public construction project, I'm sorry, that's over 1.5 million, you have to have a certified owner's project manager. So the board had previously approved the procurement for that. We issued that procurement. Proposals were due last Tuesday. We did receive one proposal. So in order to start evaluating that, we need to put together a building committee. And this is more of a discussion, you don't need to make a decision tonight. You know, the town does have the standing municipal and school building committee, and so it's a decision of, you know, are we gonna have them handle this project? Should we wanna have a committee, you know, including them, that's more focused, you know, council on aging focused? And John and I did speak with Burke Gaynor about this as well, and he was gonna bring it to his committee, but I wanted to bring it up because we do have the proposals, we definitely wanna get going on this. The idea would be, we put the committee together, you appoint the committee, and then we would bring in the candidate for the project management in, we'd interview him, the building committee would, and then look to hopefully ratify a contract with them, and then we move on to the design phase of the project. They'll oversee the design, you know, they'll help us with the procurement documents for the design, bring on a designer, and then obviously, after we have that, once the building is designed, we'll move on to construction phase, and they'll also help with that, the procurement documents, and then they'll also be onsite. They're a certified engineer, they have to be, and they will be onsite, making sure that the plans are being followed, and really are eyes and ears, approving change orders, things like that.
So we, Joey and I talked to Burke Gaynor, who's the chairman of the building committee, about this, on what they, what he thought the committee would or wouldn't do. And so I've been thinking about it, and that committee is, I'm not sure everybody who's on it, but I know Jerry Joy is, who is an very experienced contractor, retired, now on the zoning board of appeals also. Burke Gaynor, who was on the zoning board of appeals for, I don't know, ever. Bob Hodge, who not only was a school assistant superintendent, but he was also on at least one of the two building committees for Silver Lake with me, and I'm not sure who else is on there now.
Can't recall, off the top of my head.
But the more I thought about it, the more I thought, well, they're certainly qualified to do this, you know, and they're not just overseeing agents, they certainly know their way. But I thought maybe what would make sense would be to ask them to come in, and we can have a talk about, just like, okay, how, are you ready to take on the job? And if so, what resources would you like? Cody pointed out that one of the inputs we would probably like to do here is to have the council on aging directly involved, at least the director. She wouldn't have to be a voting member necessarily, but we would like to have her at least part of the process.
Absolutely.
Sort of a ex officio, I guess, or whatever, just somebody who goes to the meetings, doesn't vote on anything necessarily, but certainly has the ability to put input, because I think that's critical to it, too. And certainly, the town administrator would be involved. That's what I was thinking, and I think, I think that might be the best thing to do. Shannon?
I think you should include your town accountant in those meetings. When we did the school roof and repairs over there, we used to have a group, and the town accountant, the school committee, the school superintendent, then also, I think the school vice principal was in it. But having the town accountant in the loop is always a good idea.
Okay, are you gonna stay on?
Yeah, I'll be here, right?
But keep them in the loop, keep them in the meetings, because it was productive.
Okay. So I think that's, so if we could, if we could arrange a meeting, probably not until after, I guess maybe our first meeting after the election town meeting, maybe we could talk about it then, that she gives us the time. But if we put that on the accountant, the council on aging director.
Absolutely.
Just in general, the building committee feels they have the time and the resources to do it, and if they wanna do it, you know, I assume they do. I know Burke was thought, he thought this committee would, and I'm sure they would do a fine job. Again, they're very experienced people, you know, more so than us. I mean, they know the way around that stuff.
Yeah, I just wanna spitball with you, too, John. So I envision, obviously, it's gonna be a council on aging, but I also envision, too, maybe some non-COA events maybe there, you know, we're talking about having a community. So with that said, would we wanna look into any sort of youth and rec involvement on this committee? Whereas, there might be, we might be using that space for activities outside of the COA, or do you think that's too early in the game?
My thought would be that we kinda pretty much know what's gonna be built.
Okay.
We have at least the general concept. I mean, maybe furnishings inside, we haven't outlined that yet. But it's not like we don't, we don't know what the basic footprint's gonna be.
Sure.
And the purpose of the building committee would be really to more oversee the operation of things from the town's perspective. I mean, obviously, they're not, they're not the clerk of works, and not the project manager, and nothing like that, but they would, they would oversee those folks. And I think if we get, if they make it too big, then I think we might be just, it'll be more harder for them to do their job.
Okay.
So that's my view, I don't know, if you have different.
No, you took the words on it off. I think if you were designing, you are designing, but if you, if you were at an empty slate.
Sure.
It would make sense, maybe you throw in some dedicated recreation space, where we already have an idea, this is what it's gonna look like. And we can certainly vary from that design, but it's all just gonna be additional costs. So, you know, if we wanna look to add additional things or tweak the design substantially, we can. It's just the town's gonna be expected to have to pump up, you know, the additional funding.
Okay. And I think we can, we can ask them for reports every month or whatever, whatever we think. And if it gets to that point where it looks like there might be something else that we might wanna have more input from, with youth and rec or somebody else that can reach out.
Okay.
And we'll pull in, you know, people, just because they're not per se on the committee.
Sure.
Doesn't mean we won't pull them in. Like, I've had in-depth discussions with our energy manager consultant, Kathy Stanley, and she, you know, she has already said she is willing to jump in and, you know, be a part of that, because there's certain energy credits and just, you know, looking at how we wanna do the building, that she can provide her expertise on. She's actually on the wall pole, is building a new, I think over a hundred-million-dollar high school, a couple hundred million dollars, and she's on that building committee for the energy side of things, so she can help us out with those things as well.
Any confusion or appearance of impropriety if you have Mr. Gaynor, Mr. Joy on the building committee, where they sit on his own board of appeals, the planning board? Any concerns there, where they sit on a publicly elected position or appointed position, where they serve on that building committee?
I mean, the only one that you can't be on, the only, the only position you can't hold more than one of is finance committee board. Everybody else.
So do you view that advantageous to have them serve?
Yeah, I mean, he was, we didn't appoint him, he was on there before, but I would certainly keep him there, because I think he does an excellent job. But, I mean, I was moderator at selectmen at one point. He can, he can be on the school committee, we had a selectman here a couple of years ago, was on every school committee, plus been on board of selectmen. The only one is the finance committee by bylaw, they can't be on anything else.
Yeah, I was just thinking, and I don't mean to, you know, too off track here, I was just thinking that, you know, where this was a little bit of a contentious issue at town meeting, to build, to have the seniors that are approved, a little bit divided, town might have been a little bit divided, where you have six numbers, or.
This, this, the function of a, of a, of a building committee in this circumstance is really more tactical than anything else, and their function is to, I mean, they're not, they're not necessarily making final decisions on, on, on designs or anything like that, but their, their function is to make sure, they would do interviews for, for project managers. They would make sure the project manager does their job, make sure that the clerk of work does their job, that kind of a thing. This project is already pretty much, there's no final design yet, but we know what, about how big it's gonna be, we know generally what the, what the structure's gonna be like, so. All right, and one special town meeting?
Yes, so we had our internal town meeting, preparation meeting, last week, where we went through with the moderator and the chairman of the selectmen, chairman of the finance committee, myself, town clerk, and town accountant, just to prepare for town meeting. So as we do every year, I put together a draft of the packet for you guys, and I just wanted to go through, make sure, you know, what we did last year, what seemed to work, was any of the articles that were being proposed by the selectmen, one of you guys would move. And then finance committee was the same way, the chair of the finance committee would typically move the ones proposed by the finance committee. So I just wanted to go through, make sure that, you know, delegate these to, you know, whichever one of you felt comfortable, so we had a plan going forward. So, you know, we can take it article by article, but I think.
Whatever way you wanna do it.
I think with Najah not here, he gets the ones we don't wanna do.
That's what happens when you get.
That's what happens, that's it.
The only one Najah has to do.
That was a four-H one, yeah.
A four-H one. She's the only farmer on the board.
That's it. It's experience.
Yeah, it's a hundred fifty bucks. Okay, so.
So Article one, yeah, we can start and go through. Article one, John, you had moved this one last year, so.
Yeah, this is a funny article, anyway. I've never understood why we even have it, because it doesn't really serve a function normally, but it does give the various boards, including the board of selectmen, opportunity just to make a couple of comments about it. So I'll, I'll just give an introduction.
Yeah, glad you're handling it, because I don't understand.
This is what's on the agenda, this is, you know, what we voted on, and that's all.
Seems archaic.
It's funny you say that, because in my discussions with council, you know, you see this at some town meetings, you don't see it at some others, so I, you know, I kinda asked them, is it a legal requirement? And Paul Durezas, who obviously is, knows town meeting better than probably most, basically said this was a legal requirement prior to nineteen seventy, early seventies, four towns were required to print an annual report. And now towns are required to have an annual report. And so you actually don't need this anymore?
Yeah.
And so maybe we can look at taking it off, but I wanted to make incremental changes, I didn't wanna throw too many changes on, so.
I'd be, I'm happy with, I mean, we do need to clean up some things, and that's one thing we could clean up. Because most of the time, they say, okay, our moderator says, you know, we have a motion, we have a second on this, and that's it. What's the next one?
Yeah.
So, all right, okay.
So next year, maybe we'll take it off next year.
All right, Article two is wage and personal bylaw, who's?
So Jonathan had moved this one in the past, so I had tentatively thrown him into this, but Jonathan, the hand it's.
Yeah, I can, I'll do it if you guys want me to.
Sure.
Game on.
Okay. Three is a finance committee article on elected official salaries.
Correct, yep. So Todd Darji will move that.
All right. Four is the operating budget, which is a finance committee thing.
It'll be Todd.
Yeah, so Todd will move that.
We talked about that, just so we know what we're talking about. I think the moderator will follow the practice of taking sections for a vote, since it's splitting the vote, splitting the question, I should say, and, but doing each line. So they'll go down line one, two, three, four, five.
And then they'll have a chance to.
Have a hold, have a hold, and I think he's gonna go back and handle the hold first, and then go back and vote the whole thing out. So that's worked in the past, and it seems to be the best way to keep it moving. All right, five is the revolving funds.
So Najah had moved this one last year, so I had him moving it again this year.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. It's a pretty standard thing. And by the way, I had to remind myself that this doesn't appropriate any money at all. All this does is set limits as to how much money can rotate through that account. All of these, all of these accounts, they charge, like for our earth removal bylaw, boards like, we charge for advertising and so on, but that circles its way through, so there's no appropriation to this. Six is reserve fund, that's, that's a finance committee. Seven is?
So seven is the solar pilot, we're gonna pass over, so I, we just need one of you guys to make a motion to pass over.
I'll be going, John. You can say it.
Second.
Capital plan, proposed by capital planning committee, which I guess is me, right?
Yeah.
At this point. And I understand the moderator's probably gonna handle it the same way. In other words, he'll take them up to our department, they hold on the turnout gear, multi-mediation, vote it, go to the police department, go to the roadway, go to the highway, so, or wire department.
So John, you wanna move this one?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Let's Todd, let's two, you can if you like, but, oh, it does say move by Todd.
Move by Todd.
Oh, so we already talked about that, so Todd's gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Is the, sorry, the turnout, you're up for a discussion at the town meeting, I thought we just did that.
Only half of it.
Yeah.
So half will be up for discussion at town meeting. So half will be up for discussion at town meeting.
Well, we don't have a motion here, so I don't know, I assume it's coming out of raise an appropria, I suppose.
For which one?
For the capital.
The, it's actually just as printed in the warrant, which is 594,000 from free cash.
Okay, from free cash.
And then the remainder from the water enterprise, 13, yeah.
All right, 9, let's see here, oh, community preservation.
That is me.
That's Jonathan. Okay.
Can't wait, it's going to be quite the PowerPoint.
I can't wait for that.
What are you laughing at here? Knock your socks off. Knock your socks off, boys.
You got a few smart, I'm going to blow your hair straight back. 3,500 to support South Coastal.
That's myself, yeah.
And Pam has all the backup if we have any questions about it.
Yeah.
3,500 on the next one, Article 11 for South Shore advocacy for domestic violence.
Yeah, that's me.
And Article 12 is the $150 for the county extension, and Najah's a farmer. We have, Article 13 is the change of increasing the fee.
This is the demand fee.
Demand for the $15.
Raises it to 15, right?
Yep, right now it's 5. 15 is in line with, you know, all the other communities, and actually a lot of communities are even higher than 15.
Okay. This is the fee, just to be sure about it, because I know the town collector wants, wants us to move it, so I'll do it, but does, this is when you send a demand?
For a late, basically a late payment.
Late payments, so this is basically a late fee.
Basically, on top of interest. I'll, I'll put some notes in there, too, with all the comparable data, so you have it.
Okay. Let's see, the air conditioning, I don't know, the part-time resource.
Yeah, so Silver Lake, I sent an email over to Paula Hatch today, she will, either her or Gordon Laws will move this.
Okay. Article 15, the, we're going to pass over the $25,000 for HVAC in Silver Lake, and the reason is, they don't have any, they don't have a good solid figure on that.
So which one of you wants to move that? We're just going to need someone to, going to need someone to move over, make a motion to pass over?
Yeah.
Are you going to do that one?
I'll do it.
Okay.
16, transfer $75,000 from free cash to unemployment, this is a finance committee thing, just to make sure we have enough money in there in case there are layoffs. Article 17 is the annual election article, the special town meeting one, so this was originally proposed by the school committee, is that right? But they have, I don't know if they're taking it off, or they're just not ready to do it.
They asked us to, to do a placeholder, they were, they may, they were concerned they were going to have an operating deficit for the current fiscal year, so, but they weren't going to have enough information to confirm that prior to us printing the warrant, so they had asked us to put a place, basically a placeholder, hence the vagueness of this article, for this, and since then, in conversations with the superintendent and the director of finance and administration or in operations, they do not anticipate having a deficit, so we will not need this. So procedurally, the moderator will have to open the special town meeting.
Yep.
John, do you want to make the motion to pass over?
Yeah.
So John will make a motion to pass over the article, it'll be voted, and then they'll close the special town meeting.
I'm going to mention that in the opening, by the way, that we have this coming up at 15 minutes later, and that it's going to be pretty short, so we just...
So I will update this packet with the information from tonight, I'll put some notes in there.
We have our three big binders.
We will, I will email it to you, so you can have it as soon as I'm done, and then Pam will put it into the binder, and then by the end of the week, it'll be available if you want to pick it up, but I'll also email it to you, so you have it ahead of time.
Please not use both sides of the page.
All right, you got it. Only for yours, I'll double side everyone else's.
The problem being, and it happened to me in December, was I couldn't follow what I was doing, and I'd get myself all mixed up, so...
Yeah, you did great.
Thank you.
You did. Mr. Chair, could I make a request?
Yes.
I've drank about 64 ounces of water today, could I please use the minutes, do we recess for two minutes?
Take a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
Is that long?
That'll be plenty, it'll be nice.
It's almost done, anyway, so...
If you want, you can start deciding. So everything, so the first one.
What about this blood drop?
I guess you should, didn't come. So, there's a lot of someone signs this one. This one says clerk of the board, but Najah's not here. So this first page here needs me to sign, clerk, yeah, but Najah's not here. We can, I'll cross it, I'll cross it afterwards and put chair.
But we submitted a test.
That's where I want the clerk to be. So then every one, and then everything that has a red sign here is what you guys need to sign.
Did you have a talk to Todd?
Yeah, talk to Todd.
Yeah, in the last, last 36 hours. Well, I was asking for an updated budget status report.
Oh, yes, yes.
Did he answer that?
He did, yeah.
Okay, can we have it for tomorrow night's finance committee meeting?
He did ask it. I'll be mailing it to you.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Not the blue ones, though, right?
Yeah, not blue, just red.
Thank you, guys, my apologies.
No reason to apologize. Okay, when you get old like me...
I know, getting there, I'm right behind you.
Old like these guys.
Good drive.
Okay, so we take up our agenda updates?
Yes, so MTA action plan, no new updates on our submittal, although the board has requested that we draft a letter back to Representative Lonatra regarding her response to your initial letter. I did email her requesting, you know, what you guys had asked for, which was, you know, for her to come in and have some sort of public forum, I also followed that up and had you sign the formal letter today. We also included several, basically all of our surrounding communities that are, that are being held to the law, and we also included several communities that have voted down the law in that letter, and invited them to join, basically, the public forum that we have. And then with that, also Middleborough did, is filing, you know, some...
They filed an amicus.
Yeah, they did, so, yeah, so, and they, my understanding is, they have basically put out a call if there's any other municipalities that want to kind of join them, so I just wanted to bring that up as well.
On the amicus part, so it's not normally, well, can be, if we wanted to do our own, but frequently, you can have multiple people support, yeah, right, support on the same brief. So I think what maybe we could do with that is talk with Mr. Durezas, probably, I guess, and, and also with Middleborough, ask them if they would like us to be co-signature to it, and then we could take a look at it and go from there. I would like to do that, I think that's a good idea. And then as far as the letter to the state rep, and we've been saying this, we've been saying this for over a year. I'm a lawyer, I spend a lot of time in court, and I think that we are going about it, that most of these towns are going about this completely the wrong way. The right way to do this, this is a, this is a law, this isn't something that came from the Ten Commandments, this is just a law placed by the state, passed by the state legislature. State legislature can change it tomorrow, they can say, hey, this isn't working, this is stupid. And it is stupid, it isn't working, and it's very much opposed by almost everybody in the area, and so I think we need to put the pressure on the people, or we're giving them a pass, we're giving the state legislature a pass, we're giving, we're giving the state senate a pass, we're giving the attorney general a pass, we're giving the governor a pass. All of these people have the ability to fix this problem. And what we're doing here is spending a lot of money to go to court, so that four, or five, or six people on a court can make a decision, and we don't have to do that. We have our people that are supposed to be representing us, that should be listening to us. And we can't get Representative Lonatra or Mr. Cutler at the time to come down and talk to us about it. And so that, I think that is what, what I would like to press with all of our surrounding communities, is that we can fix this problem a lot easier by just telling the state legislatures, you've got to fix this, we, you know, we vote for you folks, and we're telling you, we don't like it. So it should be, it should be addressed. That's my view on all this thing. I just think, I just think the anger, I think the, all of that is misdirected, it's got, you know, we're letting them slide, we're letting them, we're letting it slide, right?
Sure.
You know, oh, okay, I'm a state legislature, but I don't have to do anything. Well, that's not true, you're supposed to be, you're supposed to be making good laws, and we made a bad one, fix it, that's how I see it. So, anyway, that's my rant for tonight. I've done it before, I'll do it again, and I'll continue to do it, because I really think, I really think that it's just, it's a, we're a representative democracy, that's, that's the path we're supposed to follow, we're supposed to be having the state representative, the state senate, the, the governor, at least, at least listening to us. I'm not saying they could change their mind, maybe they won't, I don't know, that's their, that's their choice, but at least they should come and talk to us about it.
Sure.
So that's how I see it, anyway. So much for that, is that it on our agenda?
Morse Brothers, no new updates, other than their work under their current permit is complete.
Yep.
Training for boards and committees, no new updates. As far as staffing and operations, I've had a series of conversations and meetings with the town of Bridgewater regarding our conservation agent, they've been very productive. We're at the point where I actually anticipate bringing a interim interim agreement to you guys for review and approval within the next few weeks. Bridgewater's drafting it, and then we'll review it, basically to split a conservation agent 50-50, they will host it, it'll be their employee, and then, you know, they would just work for us.
Is this East Bridgewater or Bridgewater?
This is Bridgewater. With going along the conservation lines, we have filled the admin role for conservation, Patty Sando, who provides administrative support in our board of health, is going to take on that role, so once we get the agent, that department will be fully staffed. Kathy Stanley, our green community, or our energy manager consultant, put together a $225,000 grant application under our green communities grant, that was submitted last week for various projects, some new AC condensers, heat pumps here for town hall, some weatherization, increased insulation across all of the town buildings, so fingers crossed we get that back. We are working with the engineer that was hired through the donation from Maryland's Landing for the Hemlock Lane landfill repair, so we had a meeting with them last week to discuss some options. They're going to put forward a plan in writing, and then we'll also be bringing that forward to you guys for your view and discussion on that. And then the last is, the Halifax page that we launched has been quite popular, we've got a lot of posts on it, it seems to be pretty productive, so, again, just want to push people, if they have, you know, fact-based questions, go to that page, and we'll try to get the answer out as quickly as we can, some things that require more digging, you know, can take a couple days, but if it's a simple question, you know, I actually try to answer it within an hour or two. And that's been really good. And just, you know, the thing with that, I do want to push, is if it's, you know, fact-based questions, ask it on there. If you're requesting documents, or you're looking for kind of more in-depth opinions or information, I do that through an email, it's just, it's more effective that way, but it's been, it's been very good.
Very good. I have one question, Cody, regarding the conservation agent over Bridgewater, is he currently under payroll, or they're in the process of hiring?
Yeah, they don't have anyone right now.
So they're looking to hire one right now, we'll get the agent, and then we'll take a share of that?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
So they're, they're searching as well?
They are, they, they actually haven't posted it, because they wanted to touch base with us first. They recognize, so basically, their town, Mike, their town manager, had reached out and saw that we had been looking for one on a part-time basis, and, and, you know, my discussions, it's very hard to find a part-time conservation agent. So we basically decided, well, if we team up and offer a full-time position, it would be probably a lot easier to attract a candidate, and so that's how the discussion started. And so they, they had someone in the role, were looking to fill it, knew they were going to have a hard time, and, yeah, so we're going to try to fill it on a full-time basis, Bridgewater's employee, that is, you know, we receive a portion of and pay for a portion of.
Well, that makes a lot of sense.
Does.
I can't imagine it would be split at 50-50, though.
We may, we have a lot of conservation needs.
Especially in Bridgewater.
Well, they only have, I'm shocked, they only need them 20 hours a week, is what their estimate is, and so we definitely could use someone 20 hours a week here, so...
Oh, yeah. Surrounded by water. All right, anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn is in the name.
So move it.
And I'll second, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, it's unanimous. Our next meeting, by the way, will be Monday night at...
Yowetry School at 5:30 in the large conference room. We'll post the agenda tomorrow.
All right, thank you.